Cut it down soon.
Present, good evening, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Cherry?
I'm present, hello, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Manali.
Ms. Samuel for the Law Department.
Also, Ms. Ed Jaclyn of Door Rosak is present.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Director Colley.
Director Colley is having a difficult time finding her to get on.
Say again, ma'am, my apologies, she's having a hard time getting on?
Yes, sir, she's having a difficult time, um, logging on.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to her. She's Chief Maisier.
Good evening, present.
Thank you, sir. Director Delisle.
Present.
Dr. Lopez is, uh, actually at a clinic tonight, so she indicates, she sent me an email earlier indicating that you'd be at the clinic till 7:00 PM, would not make the meeting. Uh, Director Anatiri. Director Richardson. Director Lavenberg.
Present, good evening, everybody.
Mr. Zalinski. Council President, I've called the roll, would you like me to proceed into the docket, ma'am?
Yes, please. Please. Mr. Colin, this is horrible.
Yeah, I'm looking for it, ma'am. I'm getting this, it's actually feedback coming a little bit on your end. Uh, but that's...
No mine?
Yeah, and I'm looking for the other, I actually have one other.
I don't have anything on song.
Council President.
Council President, Mr. Harrison is seeking your recognition, ma'am.
Yes, uh, Mr. Harrison.
Council President, I'm gonna walk on a resolution, I wanna speak on it.
Um, um, when, um, we can do that after we review the, um, after we get the docket review, you can walk it off.
I, I thought you were walking on at the beginning.
No. We'll walk it on right after we finish the docket review. I mean, you know, before we end the docket review, you can walk it on, it'll be the last, um, and let's just walk on.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just to note, is this for a vote tonight, sir, or is this for a vote on Thursday?
Vote on Thursday.
Thank you. And if you are not on the Trenton City Council, could you please mute your phones? Uh, if you are on a telephone, you can dial star six to mute yourself and star six to unmute yourself, uh, just so we can interfere, we can lose the background interference, it would be greatly appreciated, thank you very much. Council President, would you like me to proceed? Yes, ma'am, uh, there will be no minutes for approval, the next two sets of minutes are extraordinarily long, one was the twelve-hour meeting, I hope to have those done by the sixteenth. Uh, there are sixteen communications and petitions on the docket for approval, uh, the clerk's office reports will be presented at the, uh, second meeting of the month. Uh, there are no order notices for second reading of public hearing on the docket, just as a reminder, twenty-one oh six, uh, will have its public hearing on March eighteenth, that was due to meet the advertising requirements. Um, next we have resolutions from the Department of Administration, Adam E. Cruz, Business Administrator. First, Resolution twenty-one dash oh seven one, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a workers' compensation claim in the matter of Alfonso Ferretta versus the City of Trenton, claim petition number two zero one six dash one two eight two one, and the claim amount of forty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars, including attorney's fees and costs. How would you like to proceed, ma'am?
That, that, uh, that had to be roll called, doesn't it, they want settlement off?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be part of the executive session. Uh, and I'll ju, if you want, I'll just read the other three into the record.
Yes, please.
The other two into the record, I'm sorry, for the same, uh, issue. Uh, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh seventy-two, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a workers' compensation claim in the matter of Daniel Boone versus the City of Trenton, claim petition number two zero one five dash three oh six three oh, and the claim amount of two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, including attorney's fees and costs. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash seven three, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a workers' compensation claim in the matter of Ernest Miles versus the City of Trenton, claim petition number two zero one eight dash one four four seven eight, and the claim amount of two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, including attorney's fees and costs. Those will both be roll called. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh seven four, a resolution authorizing emergency appropriations to the state fiscal year twenty twenty-one temporary budget in the City of Trenton current fund, amount of one hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred dot five dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Um, mister, um, this question is for Mr. Zalinski, is he on the line?
Uh, I, I don't know if he's arrived yet, he was not on the line earlier, ma'am.
Um, I guess, mister, um, Cruz could answer it. Mr. Cruz?
Uh, yes, Madam President, I, I, I will try to reach out to him, um, and hopefully we'll have him in a couple of minutes, but I can try to answer the question if it's pertaining to this emergency appropriation.
Yes, it, it is. I wanted to get some clarity on the amount that we are allowed to spend under the, um, under, uh, under the budget law, uh, for appropriations based on the, uh, budget not being approved, how much are we allowed to spend? I, I, they said eighty-five percent of the budget from last year, and I'm just wanting to make sure that we're keeping in step with that number.
Um, Madam President, we, we can make emergency appropriations as we need them, uh, the state, uh, recognizes that we have specific needs for expenditures, and they, they, they are lenient with allowing the municipality to allocate the funding necessary to continue, uh, to operate.
Okay, so there is no, so there is no guidelines where the appropriations are concerned?
That is correct, as long as we can, as long as the budget presented to council, um, um, can, uh, the amount is accommodated in the, uh, in the budget that is presented to council, yes, it can continue.
That was one question, thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome.
How would you like to proceed, Council President?
Yes, um, that could be, um, if no one else has any questions pertaining to this resolution, it can be part of the consent.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh seven five, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a county year twenty-one and county year twenty-two shared services agreement for the provision of emergency medical dispatch provided by the county immersion to the City of Trenton, New Jersey Police Department. These are, um, out of Department of Police Sheila Colley, Director, this is twenty-one oh seventy-five.
If no one has any questions pertaining to this resolution, we can put that in the consent agenda also.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh seventy-six, a resolution authorizing the City of Trenton to apply and accept a grant pursuant to the Body Armor Replacement Fund Act, Public Law nineteen ninety-seven, Chapter one seventy-seven, under NJSA, Chapter fifty-two, Section seventeen B dash four, Section four point four, by the New Jersey Division of Criminal Justice Department of Law and Public Safety, Marzo. Would you like to proceed with your consent? Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh seventy-seven, a resolution certifying that the City Council of the City of Trenton reviewed the corrective action plans for the city's fiscal year for the city's fiscal year twenty twenty audit.
Council President, action.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman, call Wilson.
Yes, uh, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, yes, Vice President.
Yeah, yeah, this resolution on the corrective action plan, and, and I know that the city responded to the auditor's request. Is there a deadline, or can, and can you come back to us and let us know that you have done the corrective action?
Um, normally, the way it works, um, Madam President, Vice President, is that we, we give the auditor what the correction action plan is for the city to address these, uh, findings, um, and then we move ahead with the implementation. Um, one of the, one of the things that I can do is actually, um, uh, in a couple of months, we can go back and, and, and address this, we can put it on the docket, and we can, I can come back and give you an update with Mr. Zalinski as to what actions has, have been, uh, what action have been done with the departments to implement the, um, the, the, the actions that the city will be taking for each of the findings.
Okay, so, because my concern is that every time an audit is done and they suggest corrective action plans, we get the same suggestions the following audit, so I think we need to start moving on these plans, and if Mr. Conlon could, um, maybe tag and say to contact Mr. Cruz in a certain period of time for him to come back, Mr. Zalinski to come back and let us know what's going on.
And how would you like the period to be, ma'am?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
This is, this is Ron Zalinski.
Oh, Ron is on.
Yes.
Yeah, let me ask something before I get on, so I can...
We'll do, um, the floor is being yielded to Councilman Rodriguez, and then Mr. Zalinski.
Yes, I, how come we have not got the report from the audit yet? I have the twenty eighteen, the twenty nineteen, but I don't have a copy of, of the one for twenty twenty, and I believe that usually the last two years, we were giving the copies of the report ahead of this resolution certifying that we have reviewed. I, I have not reviewed that, I just got, uh, got it today. He made me a copy of, of justice corrective plan, but I delivered a copy there, I'd like to get my hard copy before, uh, I have to analyze the whole scene before I could say that I review anything, I have not reviewed anything, so I'll be lying to myself, so I'm gonna, uh, I believe that this should wait for two weeks until we get that report, so we could go over it, and then we, uh, we go with the corrective, uh, uh, saying that we review the corrective plan, because what we have there is exactly what Councilwoman, uh, said, that every year, we see the same thing, the same findings, the same, uh, corrective actions, so outcomes is about the same thing. And this year, we have, uh, we have, uh, this, I saw a few more, but I'd like to see the report ahead of time, you know, I, 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 I cannot be voting on stuff, saying I believe we should pay for this for, for the last meeting, I don't believe that the state, i- if this is an emergency matter, it, it shouldn't have waited until now. I believe we, we, we deserve to look at that whole report from, from the body before we get into this, so thank you.
Yep, um, Madam President, may I say something?
Yes, go right ahead.
All right, thank you, Madam President, um, so to some of the points of, uh, with Mr. Rodriguez, the, what you, what you, what we are voting on is actually the corrective action plan, not necessarily that you have reviewed the audit. The, the findings are normally some of the, some of, of, of the findings that are done by the auditor, so, um, they, they summarize the findings rather than you having to go through a document that is like three hundred pages thick, um, or two hundred pages thick, and they give you the...
Mr. Cruz, that, that, I understand that area, Mr. Cruz.
Yeah.
When is, when is the deadline, when is the deadline? Because I understand what you're saying, I know, because I've not been through these two books in the past two years, this is what it's me.
Yes.
But the thing is, when do we, do you have to turn this to, uh, to the state or whoever?
Hey, um, uh, Ron, is, is there a timeline, uh, for, to, to, to turn this in, or can we, um, can we give the council an additional two weeks for them to review, and then we can put it up at the next, uh, at the next docket?
I would think we can give them the two more weeks to review.
Okay, uh, so, Madam President, I mean, if, if it's, if, if, if it's the wish of the council for us to, uh, pull it off the docket, I don't have an issue pulling it off the docket, and I welcome the invitation for Councilman Santiago to explain this a little bit more thorough, we can either do it, but, you know, to, to...
So you do it to the whole county, to the whole county, like you, you did it, uh, the last year.
I, yeah, so, Councilman, if you let me, Councilman, if you let me finish, I was, I was getting to that, if, if, if it's the will of the council to discuss it with the entire council, we can do that, or we can do it with a, uh, you know, with a few council members, that would be the choice of the council.
Alrighty, so we'll, we'll pull this, Mr., uh, Mr. Conlon, um, administration, is pulling this, uh...
Yes.
Twenty, Resolution twenty-one dash oh seven seven, um, and for the next council meeting.
Sure, ma'am.
Uh, uh, Madam President, I would like to get the hard copy way before that, so I could go over it.
Councilman, I actually have a hard copy that I emailed out, I can print you out a copy of that.
Yeah, print me a copy, and I'll be, usually, usually, we get packages, every year, we get packages. You know, what, what happened this year, there's no money to print them?
I believe it was, I believe it was explained to me that the actual audit was completed sometime back, and they had actually distributed it back then, but I will confirm that, but in any...
No, 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 that's not true, that, I have the two copies here, from two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we have not received this from two thousand twenty, because I like, I keep my hard copies of everything, I keep...
And I, and I was, I was told something different this morning, but I will make sure that you get a hard copy, sir, and the rest of the council as well.
You have not, this is Mr. Zalinski, you have not received, you have not received your copy of the audit?
That's he's representing, sir.
Okay, yeah, um, again, that was done before I got back, um, I will take a look to see where they are. You should have received that probably a month ago. Let me find out why they didn't get distributed.
Yeah, Ma- Madam President, we, we did deliver, I believe Finance was delivering a copy to Mr. Conlon, uh, this, this afternoon, so I just, just for the record.
Alrighty, he said he had it, and we would, he would make sure that we gotta, uh, receive the copy of it. Alrighty, so, um, we're pulling, um, twenty-one dash oh seventy-seven, and, and in the meantime, um, on the council, we get a copy of the actual audit done, thank you, we may continue.
Uh, Council President McBride and Clerk Colin, it's, it's Councilwoman Robin Vaughn, I'm sorry I'm late, I just joined.
Thank you, ma'am. Has Mr. Blakely joined us? Not at this time, okay. Uh, Council President, would you like me to proceed? Uh, let's go to Resolution twenty-one dash oh eight oh from the Department of Public Works, Wally O'Wahy, Anatiri, Director. Uh, Resolution twenty-one dash zero eight zero, a resolution awarding a contract to American Asphalt Company Inc. for the purchase and delivery of pot mix asphalt for the reconstruction of the streets awarded through New Jersey State Contract Number T dash zero one five five, eighteen dash fleet dash zero zero six three eight, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
Uh, uh, Wally on the call, because I believe that this is very, very little asphalt for what we need, it's like right now, I was driving around, uh, I, I, I was pissed, there's potholes everywhere. With this last no stop, something happened, and they are all, all over Greenwood Avenue, uh, all, all over the city, we have these, so they need to be, uh, fixed, at least those holes, until we can replace the whole scene. Uh, one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-three is, is little, is finished, we need more than that.
Did Wally, um, Director Anatiri want to expound on that?
He, I, I, uh, Madam President, I know he was on, he may be having some technical difficulties, however, I can convey the message to Mr. Anatiri, and I will suggest, uh, uh, to council members that they drive around, uh, if they can provide, because these things are, uh, uh, the freezing and flooding is really doing a, a, a huge, uh, job on our streets, if, if, if you would be so kind to, uh, take down, uh, the, the locations, and, um, and, and we can, you know, we can address them as, as we get them. But we, you know, but streets is also going around and assessing, uh, damages, I mean, we had a, we had a very cold spell, and for the last few days, it was forty degrees, and now it's back to freezing again, so, you know, we expect more heavy potholes, uh, in the next couple of days, once, once this cold spell goes away again.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, Mr. Cruz, Greenwood Avenue, all the way down to Hamilton, is like their route. There are so many large potholes, I know a lot of cars are getting damaged, so they need to take a look at that. Actually, Public Works should be driving down these streets and checking them out.
Okay, I, I, I took notes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Madam President, Quinton Avenue, the whole thing, Whittaker Avenue, the whole thing, I'm for the street, the whole thing.
Councilman, did you say Winton and Winter?
Quin- Quinton, Q-U-I, yes.
Got it, thank you.
And Whittaker.
Uh, Whittaker, okay, got it.
Whittaker is, uh, in the plans to be replaced, the whole thing, but there's a lot of holes there.
Okay, I got them both, Councilman, thank you.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Council.
Uh, I think Quinton Avenue's on the list to be, to be replaced, too. Because you guys, a lot of potholes.
Okay. Got it.
Alright, we may continue, Mr. Conlon, that can be part of the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, consent, thank you. Next, we have Department of Public, uh, Department of Water and Sewer, Mark Lavenberg, Director. First, we have Resolution twenty dash seven eighteen, a resolution authorizing contract awarded to seventy-two hour LLC, DBA National Fleet Order Group for the purchase of one twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one Ford Transit Cargo Van, model R two Y, T dash two five zero, one hundred and thirty inch low, RF nine seven zero, nine thousand seventy gross vehicle weight, all-wheel drive with Inticon's equipment for the engineering office, in an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Yes, mister, um, um, Mr. Lavenberg, I just don't believe that we should be spending anything out of that water department that is not based on chemicals or anything for the quality of the water until after that audit, um, we just ordered you guys fleets and fleets of vans and trucks, and um, under Dr. Fouché, um, we, we ordered a lot of vehicles for you, um, for that department, um, for the department, and I just believe that until we get that forensic audit, if it doesn't have anything to do with...
Uh, my apologies, I'm looking for it, somebody's got some background noise. Please continue.
Um, just, just so council's aware of this, this is Ron Zalinski, that forensic audit is gonna be probably two months away.
Uh, and, and so...
It's not gonna be an immediate turnaround.
Like I stated earlier, I don't think that they should be ordering any more vehicles or anything that ha, doesn't have to do with the actual treatment of the water, um, until after that audit is, um, at least, um, halfway complete, and, and also, uh, the budget, because the water department is, uh, part of our budget, and I believe that we should not be ordering anything out of that water department till the budget is passed and until the, at least the first part, phase one, of that audit is completely transmitted to the council, that's, that's where I... So for twenty dash seven one eight, I would like for it to be roll called.
No, no, ma'am. Would you like me to proceed, ma'am?
Please do.
Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh eight one, a resolution authorizing contract awarded to Groff Tractor Mid-Atlantic LLC for the purchase of parts, service, maintenance, and repairs for the construction vehicles, backhoe loaders, et cetera, for the construction and maintenance office awarded through Middlesex Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, ESCNJ, eighteen slash nineteen dash twenty-five, for a period of one year, in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, Council President McBride?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Um, uh, I just wanna know, I believe we already have a maintenance contract with the City of Trenton, right, through the Public Works Department, um, for all our equipment, right? Don't, don't we share the same garage? So, uh, Mr. Cruz, and/or Wally Anatiri?
This is for, this is for the Department of...
No, 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 I understand it's Department of Water, I'm saying that this is a maintenance contract, right, to fix a backhoe and et cetera, for, for construction vehicles. So, the, the, the City of Trenton has a, uh, maintenance contract, right, for, for its Public Works trucks, so at one time, the water department was under the Public Works Department, so are, is in that contract cover all, uh, all types of vehicles of this sort? Do we need another, uh, company with a maintenance contract to fix our, uh, city vehicles?
Uh, Madam President, may I?
Go right ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Hi, uh, Madam President, thank you. Um, uh, Councilwoman, this, this resolution is actually to purchase parts, it's not for maintenance, uh, yes, maintenance will be done on the backhoes when they break down, but it's not necessarily to bring the backhoe to a location, it is actually for the in, uh, in-house mechanics at Water to perform the repairs.
Um, no, it says contract awarded to, to Groff Truck Tractor in Mid-Atlantic LLC. So, and it said, yes, we're purchase of parts, but it all says for service, and it's for maintenance and repair. For front loaders, e- et cetera.
Yes, uh, Mr. Lavenberg, can you elaborate on this, uh, resolution?
Yes, uh, yes, and, and, and thank you, uh, Councilman Rodriguez as well, so yes, we do have two, um, contracts for, uh, coming up relative to our equipment repairs, um, yes, the, the resolution does have in the title there maintenance as well, in case there's, uh, specific parts that our mechanics at Trenton Water Works will have to take out, and then send back for, like, refurbishing, so if you're refurbishing a, uh, a piston arm on a backhoe, uh, we would do the disassembly, they would supply the parts, but then that requires, you know, specialized equipment to do a, a part like that, so yes, there's two contracts here, and they're both, the majority of the work is done by, uh, Trenton Water Works employees at our garage at, uh, Corlin Street, and this is, is primarily for parts, there are services, service parts in there, but it's not about, we don't take our backhoes down to, uh, Cherry Valley to have the work done on it, we do the work here in Trenton.
Well, why are we paying for the maintenance piece? Why does it say, why doesn't it say just parts? Why does it say service, maintenance, and repairs?
My apologies, again, so there are certain parts that our, our crews will take out, and in certain parts of the backhoe, again, like a piston arm that, that lifts the piston up and down, or makes the bucket move back and forth, that has to be sent back, and you have the, the hydraulic parts swedged on, and parts like that as well.
Okay, so, ooh, so when will the construction company, Groff, come to Trenton and do their piece of what you just described?
Um, well, that would normally be, they wouldn't be coming to us, we would be sending the parts to them, so we would drive it down to their shop to have that part taken out, we have the mechanics that can take the, the unit apart, and then some parts, when they come out, have to be sent out to a shop to be, uh, re- refurbished or, or rebuilt.
Okay, so, why can't we leverage the, uh, the, 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 uh, the Public Works contract? They have all these type of vehicles, so they maintain all their trucks right here in Trenton. Okay, so, don't answer that question, it was rhetorical.
Thank you.
I want this, I, I, Council President, and, and, uh, um, uh, Clerk, can you roll call, uh, zero eight one, and I will be roll calling zero eight two two, but we can discuss that as well.
Sure, ma'am.
You may continue, Mr. Colin, if no other council member wants to, uh, speak to that resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero eight two, a resolution ordering a contract to Cherry Valley Tractor Sales for the purchase of parts, provide service, maintenance, and repairs for transportation equipment with a specific intention for backhoe loaders awarded through New Jersey State Contract Number T dash two one eight seven, four three oh two two, for a period of one year, in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. And this is a note for roll call, I'm in his phone.
Yes, uh, so here we go again, um, the language, um, so we have another contract for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, Mr. Lavenberg just spoke about the one above that will, uh, the Groff contracting company, contract, uh, tractor company, will be providing parts, but also, he just said, also, they're gonna do some level of maintenance when they have to drive the particular, particular part that has to be replaced to Groff, um... I don't know what kind of contractor that does that, because, you know, I have... And I'm not bragging, but I have a John Deere snowblower, 1332 Professional. And when that, when my snowblower needs service, the equipment company comes to pick it up from my house and drop it back off and get it, you know, after they service it, blah, blah, blah. I don't understand why any company or organization or customer would have to take their parts to the service provider that's doing the maintenance on their tractor or backhoe or whatever. This doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know any... And I'm sure you have all types of top-tier backhoes. I don't know if you've got Caterpillar, I don't know if you've got John Deere, I don't know what you've got, but I know those companies, they come and get their stuff, and they will bring it back to you. So I don't know what Mark is talking about here. And here we go again, he says that 21082 is for a backhoe as well. And so we need two contracts to service a couple of backhoes? How many backhoes do we have at Trenton Water Works, Mark, Mr. Lavenberg?
Councilwoman, I don't have an accurate number on that, how many backhoes we have, but I would say in the order of six. And then because of the way we buy them under state contract, we don't always necessarily get the same brand. So I know that Groff handles Case backhoes, and then I believe Cherry Valley does John Deere backhoes. So again, you're gonna have different contracts covering different brands of backhoes.
Yeah, but I know all those companies, they will come pick up their product, right? And they will bring it back to you. So I don't understand why you just stated that you have to take the part to them. So, you know, I'm just not, I don't know what these contracts are for, I'm not understanding them. I don't think we need them. I think that there, we can leverage some of the contracts that's already in place in the Public Works Department. So, I just, you know, again, just have this, I'm gonna do some research, and I would like Mr. Cruz, the business administrator, to, between now and Thursday, before we vote on this, pull the Public Works service contracts and let me know how they fix their vehicles and their construction equipment, what type of contract we have in place for them. And then perhaps Mr. Cruz, being the business administrator, who oversees strategically across all the departments in the city, I think that you should make certain that the water department and the Public Works Department are leveraging the same maintenance contract when it comes to our assets, like our construction equipment, right? So we should not have each department head taking out individual contracts for their own equipment. The equipment belongs to the municipal corporation, that is the City of Trenton. So they should be leveraging the same contracts. So, I'm, we have a garage that, in the Public Works Department, that maintains all our construction trucks and vehicles, and Trenton Water Works should be using the same resources. So I don't know why every council meeting, Mark Lavenberg comes here with all these different contracts that he's given to who knows who to come to Trenton to do services that we've already have contracts in place for. So, and that's all I'm gonna say about that. And I can't believe companies like Caterpillar and John Deere come, you gotta take parts to them to fix. That is hogwash, thank you. And have that 2182, 21-082, roll-call, please, Mr. Conlon.
Already noted, ma'am, thank you.
You may continue, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-083, a resolution authorizing an additional three-month contract extension to SourceLink to continue to provide printing and mailing services for regular file and corrected billing for the division of water billing in an amount not to exceed $23,221.91.
If there's no questions to that, we will make that a consent agenda, part of the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-084, a resolution ordering contract to Atlantic Plumbing Supply Corp for the furnishing delivery of copper water source service tubing on an as-needed basis to perform water service installation and repair work in the water distribution system ordered through New Jersey State Contract Number T-3027-89798 in an amount not to exceed $85,000.
A roll-call, please.
Yes, ma'am, noted for roll-call. Next, we have Resolution under the Department of Housing and Economic Development, Benjamin Delisle, Director. First, we have Resolution 21-085, a resolution ordering contract in an open process. My apologies. Resolution, this is 21-085, a resolution ordering contract to repair in open process in accordance with NJSA Chapter 19:44, Cap. A, Section 20.4, et cetera, to Wallace Robertson Todd LLC for professional consulting services to conduct updates to the redevelopment area plans within the transit-oriented development area in an amount not to exceed $290,000 for a period of one year through RFP 2020-47.
Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Is Ben Delisle on the line?
I am here.
So can you elaborate on this request here? Who is Wallace Robertson Todd? Why do we need them? And I thought that when DCA came to this council meeting and said that they were going to work on the redevelopment plan in the areas, relate, that, you know, that's part of the whole 250, that includes, include the 250 strategic plan for the City of Trenton. Why, and they're doing that work for free, I believe. Why do we need 290,000 of a private source here? Why do we need these professional services when DCA said they're gonna do this for free? What are we going, what are we getting different from here? What am I missing?
Council President, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Councilwoman, this, you correctly pointed out, local planning services completed the strategic plan that you heard presentations on and was accepted by the council as part of the master plan. That work is complete. This contract is to build upon that work and look at our redevelopment plans, update them, amend them, possibly consolidate them around the transit centers, the three train stations, and rewrite the redevelopment plans for it. So that work was not being provided by local planning services. This is to build upon that work. We did an RFP, we evaluated several proposals, and this was the one that the staff found to be most advantageous and the best proposal.
Now, I remember clearly, because I asked the gentleman who came from DCA, and I specifically asked him about the redevelopment areas and what was gonna be included in his study. And he clearly stated, said, you know, he, it's gonna include anything. The scope of it is all of Trenton and the redevelopment area. And I asked, and I know this to be true, because then I asked, will it include the parks? And I asked, he said, yes, because we both agree that the parks are also part of redevelopment. Right? So I don't understand this at all. And I think between now and Thursday, I gotta reach out to DCA to get some clarity on this. And I never see, if they finish that work, did you come to council and did they come to council? Because we were supposed to be involved in that, that piece of revising the strategic 250 plan with DCA. Seen any of that work? You haven't shared that with the council?
Councilwoman, you absolutely saw a presentation on it, and council passed a resolution accepting it.
No. Again, we, I mean, I know you bring a lot of stuff to the council, and they bring resolutions, but I never met with you or anybody from DCA. I never met, I never had a meeting with you to review any of that stuff. And you know that to be true. I'd never met with anybody from DCA related, along with your office, related to those changes. If anybody else on this council has, I don't think, I know we have not. And that's one of the concerns I have. Things show up on this docket in the 11th hour, and the council has never had given any visibility or insight to it, and we're supposed to vote on it. So, I will, I will pull this, I mean, not pull it, I mean, I will, I will request that this is roll-call, and I will definitely be reaching out to DCA about that piece of work and what this is, what this includes for $290,000.
DCA is not doing this work.
I understand, but this is what I understand, but we're under MOU, right? So why are we spending this kind of money on services that DCA supplies this municipality for free?
Well, if you recall, I did, we did a couple meetings ago, put a resolution to accept services from local planning services for a study and similar work in the downtown area. And then we asked to do the working committee, or working steering committee, as part of that work that was tabled or withdrawn at the request of council. That hasn't come back, so that work is not moving forward. But DCA is not gonna do all of our planning work for free for the entire City of Trenton.
Well, you know what?
Downtown, Councilwoman, if I could finish. The downtown work is being done by DCA, as you suggested. They did the strategic, the part of the master plan. And that was, you did absolutely see that, there was presentations to council, and that work was accepted by the council. I'd be happy to send you a copy of it if you don't have it for your files. But this is to build upon that work, to have redevelopment plans that are modern and up-to-date and compliance with Trenton 250 and modern planning practices, that will be, there will be regulatory documents to guide development into the future. And you will absolutely be part of that. And I could add that, as you know, redevelopment plans are enacted by ordinance. So you will see those plans and be able to approve those plans before they become law.
Well, and the other thing that I discussed with DCA that I know didn't happen, we were supposed to have a committee formed that had some people from the, our residents population. So I don't understand, yeah, I need some clarity.
I'm sorry, what committee are you referring to, Councilwoman?
On the, on understanding what our redevelopment areas are and what the plans are going forward. We have to invite the community in on these. We can't do this in isolation with just you and somebody from DCA. So, I remember I had...
We have public engagement when we do these plans.
Because, look, the community always has to be part of redevelopment discussions, Mr. Delisle, and we go back and forth with this. So I don't see how you're presenting plans to council, and I really don't see how my council members are approving these plans, and we have not discussed with the community. Because the community, I guarantee you, will say they have no idea what we're talking about right now. Because I know you do, you don't do a good job. You don't do a good job, Mr. Delisle. The Housing and Economic Development Department does not do a good job of community outreach involving the community in these discussions and letting the folks know what our redevelopment areas are and what the plans for them going forward.
Well, Councilwoman, I would, I think that's patently just not true and just...
Oh, yeah, it is patently...
We absolutely reach out to community...
So when was this meeting? When were the community meetings, Mr. Delisle? When did you hold them?
This is to hire a consultant to start the work.
Well, if the consultants don't get, the consultants work for the municipality, the city, the people of the city. That's their $290,000. So, so, okay?
Okay.
So they need to know what this consultant is gonna be doing. This is not your money. This is the taxpayers and residents' money of the city. So we need to involve them in redevelopment planning, planning. And we have not done that.
Councilwoman, we haven't started the work. I gotta hire the consultant.
Well, you know what, you know what, Mr. Delisle? You need to do this work. You need to start hiring people in your department instead of outsourcing to outsiders. Now, I done asked you a thousand times about building out your department with long-term or full-time resources to do this work. There is no reason we need to, $290,000 can go a long way with a person's salary.
Councilwoman...
Well, I'm not, I'm not interested, I'm not a supporter of your approach to outsource this type of expertise. You should hire it. And those folks should move to Trenton if they take, if they accept your offer of employment. So every time I look at this docket, I'm disgusted at the approach that you have brought to Trenton regarding building out economic development here. I'm getting very concerned about your approach to economic development in Trenton. It doesn't appear that, to me, Robin Vaughn, I don't know, I don't speak for my other council members, it doesn't appear that you have a plan for Trenton, and it doesn't appear that you have the interests of Trentonians at hand. Because every time you come here with this outsourcing and contracting this level expertise, and you don't include any folks from this community to be part of the planning, sir. So, Council President McBride, can we just roll-call this, please?
Yes, yes, we can. Mr. Delisle, I wanted to speak to the point that you made when you stated that you had a resolution on the docket that to address the downtown area that DCA had given us a consultant to do that particular work. And I had that resolution pulled based on how it was written up with all the various organizations. And I wanted to ask Mr. Conlon, I don't know if you can remember off the top of your head, Mr. Conlon, but when I pulled that resolution, I pulled that resolution to have an in-depth discussion with Mr. Director Delisle so that we could talk about bringing Trentonians on as part of the, as part of the planning process. Can you speak to that, Mr. Conlon? When I pulled that resolution?
Yeah, you wanted a meeting with Mr. Delisle to go over the criteria that should be the selection process for the stakeholders. Instead of naming specific stakeholders, it should be criteria that apply to stakeholders, and you wanted to facilitate that so people with a better investment in Trenton and more knowledge of Trenton can be a participant in that rather than pre-selected organizations that may or may not exist, you know, in a short period of time. That being said, yeah, you did try to facilitate that meeting, and we are working on putting together those criteria at this point in time.
All right, thank you. It's gonna be roll-called?
Next, we, would you like me to proceed, ma'am? Or is anybody, from deed restrictions on resale and refinancing for an affordable housing project known as the Trenton Watch Factory located at 720 Mama Street, Trenton, New Jersey? Doors open.
Council President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Actually, I would like to move to table this, this particular resolution indefinitely, because there are many, many concerns about the document.
The deed restrictions.
The mandatory deed restriction for rehabilitative rental properties and compliance and conformity with the Affordable Housing Act in law. I hear some serious questions, and I have some serious concerns. I raised those concerns, and I think other, you yourself as well. But I would like that Mr. Conlon, I think, has reached out to the administration and Mr. Delisle... But I would like that Mr. Conlon, I think, has reached out to the administration and Mr. Delisle with those questions. So, Mr. Delisle, did you get a chance to review those questions regarding this resolution?
I, I did have a chance to review them, yes.
And can you tell us what your take on this is?
Councilwoman, can I suggest something to you that you ask Mr. Delisle to table this? And have that conversation with all of the documentation that he needs to back up why he wants to put this here and to address the fair housing law and all of the other things? That's a suggestion that I'm asking that you just ask him to table it and to have this discussion.
Uh, well, Mr. Delisle, well, thank you, Council President. That is a, a great suggestion. And, but I think that he owes the public an explanation, at least preliminarily, as to because I want to give my concerns and summarize them to the public as to why I want it tabled. So, Mr. Delisle, do you understand? Because I, you put a memo forward as well attaching and you are supportive of this this, this request by this developer, right? It looks like you, based on your memo, you are very supportive of this. So, I was wondering, can you tell the folks why? Tell the citizens why you're supportive of it? And can you just give us an overview of your memo that's attached to the resolution?
Give you an overview of the project in general.
In your memo, you says, you, you state that, that it's, this, this resolution being presented to council is merely symbolic. And it doesn't have any impact to the affordability of the property. So if it has no, if, if, if you believe as the Director of Economic Development that lifting a mandatory deed restriction from a developer property that has not expired the 10-year period as per the law. And you believe that is essentially symbolic and it doesn't have any impact on the affordability of the property, I just need you to explain that.
Council President, do I have the floor?
Yes, go right ahead.
Well, this, 720 Mama Street, also known as Circle F, was a low-income senior housing project that failed, right? It was, and this is going back seven, eight years ago. And it, it failed. It was, wasn't paying its bills. There was vacancy. It hadn't been repaired. The developer, Dan Brenner, took on the project. All of the affordability restrictions, covenants, and, and the debt on the property were released by DCA and HFMA and by the city. All that was, was done. There was a, the developer had, at the request of the city, put on an affordability restriction on a few units for some of the folks that were still living there. All the, the rest of it was all market rate. The city nor DCA nor HFMA put in any financing, any funding to warrant or require that affordability restriction. The one that was most recently done and the one that's asked to be released. The, the residents that were there, only a few of them remain from the original ones that were there. They have Section 8 or other programs that provide their, their rent, so they're protected in that fashion. In addition, the city's rent control ordinances protect them from significant increases. We're capped at about 2.1% right now. Because the city did not have any financial interest in the affordability restrictions. And because I know, Councilwoman Vaughn, you're proponent of marquere housing in the city of Trenton. And we had nothing else to hold them to, yes, I do recommend that we release it at the request of the developer.
Wait a minute now. Wait a minute. I am also very interested to ensure that the people who are low-income and any agreements that are entered into by developers are honored. Okay, and so the mandatory deed restriction for this particular property is, has not expired. And the developer doesn't get requested to be lifted. Nor does the council have the authority to lift, lift it up until the 10-year period has expired. So there are a lot of concerns here. So as far as what you suggest that this is symbolic, if it's symbolic and the council, why, and you, and, and the deed restriction is not necessary as based on just the, the owner, the owner did not take any subsidies, which that's not what the deed restriction says. It says in consideration of the subsidies received by the owner from the municipality regarding this rental agreement. The owner agreed to abide by the covenants. So of the, of this restriction, he, he agreed to this. And he agreed that he will be in this until 20, for 10 years. Because he, he received subsidies from the municipality.
At least.
Pardon me?
The, the, the council previously released.
So, so, so there's a reason why he signed on to this deed restriction, right? If he didn't receive anything, then why sign on to the mandatory deed restriction? And deed restrictions are such that affordable housing, this is a deed restrictions for rehabilitated rental property with covenants restricting rentals, conveyance, the sale of it, any improvements and requiring notice of foreclosure and bankruptcy. So he, any owner of this building currently, the deed restrictions follow to the next owner. Right? If, if, if any, if any, that he wants to sell it. So there, this, this mandatory, these restrictions are not optional, right? We, the council, nor the developer gets to say when they expire or can be lifted.
That's not, that's not true. That's not true.
Oh, yes, it is true.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
That's the reason that I am asking.
Mister, and, and again, here you are coming to this council meeting. If you want to defend the developer instead of defend and support Trentonians, then, Mr. Delisle, you need to go work for, who did you say? Dan Brenner? You go, you need to go work for him, sir. Because we hired you.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
To advocate, advocate for Trentonians. Okay, so all I, excuse me, Council President?
I was just asking if we could ask him to, to, to pull this resolution again to make.
Mr. Delisle, are you going to pull it?
Council President, respectfully, I, I was prepared to answer more of the questions. If you'd prefer, I could answer them in writing tomorrow and then provide them to council and then maybe make that decision on Thursday to see if they're satisfactory, the answers.
Well, I'm going, I'm going to, look, I'm going, is, is the Law Department on the, on the line?
The Law Department is on the line, yes.
Okay, are you familiar with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs mandatory deed restrictions for rehabilitated rental property?
Um, Councilwoman, yes, I, I am familiar with the law.
Mm-hmm. So what has?
But, but, but just with, with all, in all due respect, I am not prepared to provide any legal opinion with regard to that tonight. So again, I think Mr. Delisle, Director Delisle just indicated that if you have further questions, if you would provide them to us. I'll even take down your questions now and I'll work with the director to provide you with, with sufficient answers.
Okay, very well, but I will say.
Me back to the point that I keep asking Mr. Delisle. Mr. Delisle, do not come with the information that he needs. And instead of him pulling this resolution, he's saying, I'll get back to you on Thursday. When he should have had all of the facts, the fair housing information, the 10-year deed restriction information should have been in the hole to this resolution. And you risk it failing rather than to do the sensible thing as table it or whichever one is, is affiliated with this procedure. And I believe it is, uh, pulling it. Instead of you pulling it, you would say, oh, I could get back with you a couple of days with the information. When the information should have been attached already. The fair housing law should have been attached to this because it is pertaining to this particular property. Then you needed to redo your memo, Mr. Delisle, because your memo says it's symbolic. There's nothing symbolic about the council having to intercede to grant permission to to take the restrictions off of a deed restriction. There's nothing symbolic about that. But before you do what is right, you keep saying, hey, I went to Thursday. You should do the right thing, Mr. Delisle, and, and pull this.
Council President, I, I do have the information, but I, I don't want to be answering any of the questions.
I, I, I just have one question for Ms. Samuel. I don't have anything more for Mr. Delisle. Ms. Samuel, I will say to you in the Law Department, before any resolution comes to council, it's signed. It was signed by, it appears to be Rod DeWitt for form and legality. So the fact that the Law Department, any member, is not prepared to discuss anything that's on this docket because you signed it. So I trusted you, and my council has trusted, that what's on this docket has been fairly reviewed and vetted by the Law Department. And the fact that you guys can tell me today during a council meeting in front of our public that what's on this docket for approval by their representation has not been, the, the, the Law Department can't speak on it. So is Rod DeWitt here? Because he signed off on this resolution.
And, Council, Councilwoman Vaughn, if I may. And, and yes, the Law Department did sign off as to form and legality. And if you, if you would really like to know, I, I'm the one that drafted the resolution. This, that resolution was thoroughly vetted. And it was vetted based on information that was, that we had discovered in our department, in the Housing and Economic Development Department. As you know, this particular deed restriction was executed back in, on July 31st of 2014. Many moons ago before myself or Mr. Delisle were even employed by the city. So based on memorandums and other documents that we found within our, with, with, within our records, that's how we were able to guide the council and advise them that it is, in essence, a symbolic deed restriction. Because it was made, the decision based on the memorandums that we found in our records was strictly policy. It was a policy decision at the time because the city was concerned about the 14 residents that were still at the property, the 14 senior citizens. So Dan Brenner at the time said to, said to the city, okay, I, 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 I hear you, city. I hear your concerns for these residents so that they won't be displaced or made homeless. So I'm going to agree to this restriction. But he did not receive any money. And at the same time that he was adding that restriction, DCA and NJHMFA were all releasing all of their deed restrictions concerning the affordability component of the property. They were all releasing them because they realized that the project was really not affordable anymore. It was predominantly a market rate property. And so, okay, he did that as a, as a policy concession between the city and the developer. It was done. And so that's the reason, based on the information that we discovered, that's the reason why Director Delisle's memo says that it's essentially symbolic. And, and, and we did weigh, we did weigh, we did weigh the, the, the factors that there are only six remaining seniors from the original 14. So we don't even have, you know, 14 seniors living in those affordable units anymore. We have six. And each of them, that developer has assisted them in receiving Section 8 so that their, their rents are subsidized. And based on rent leveling, our rent leveling ordinance, they're basically protected. And so that's the reason why Director Delisle felt, and, and I looked at the documents, felt that it was okay that the city could do this. And because it was, because there's no money, there was no state.
Okay, okay, Ms., 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 Ms. Samuel. I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't, I, I, all right, so I'm looking at the documents. I get the backstory. Thank you very much. But we still have to follow the law, right? So I'm looking at the deed restriction that was signed on in 2014 by the developer and, and Mayor Eric Jackson, right? So it's incomplete, right? Compared to the deed restriction document that currently resides on the DCA website. That was in, the version that was updated back in, it was in, the, the version is the latest as of 2007. So when I look at that document and what is being, what was, what was signed on or agreed to by the developer with the mayor Eric Jackson, minus the administrative agent of the city. So I don't think the mayor can unilaterally sign on to something like this. Because otherwise, why are you involving, involving council now? So I have a lot of questions. But if you look at what the, the developer is asking in Article 2 of the, of the deed restriction, he, it says, provide the council with a, well, provide the details of the properties. And, and Schedule A is not attached here. So the only thing we got, only thing he provided us were the apartment numbers. I want to know what, based on the Affordable Act, we, this council, we need to know how many bedrooms each apartment has. And whether those apartments have been changed, right? So because the deed restrictions restrict the developer from making any improvements on these, these units. So I need to see that. And I want, and I would appreciate Mr. Delisle get that information for us. Also, there, there, there's, also in the document, there are clauses that have been totally removed regarding foreclosure, regarding improvements. So, because if he, if he made improvements to those properties, then that sort of, that, that, that's a violation of the covenant as well. Because then those, those apartments are no longer deemed, deemed to be affordable housing.
Councilwoman, are you, excuse me, you're referring to the document that was executed by the city in 2014?
I want to have a point of order here and I want to ask Mr. Cruz.
I am referring to what are, Councilwoman Vaughn.
I'm asking for a point of order and I'm asking for Mr. Cruz, Mr. Cruz. Is Mr. Cruz still on this?
Uh, yes, Madam President, I am here.
Mr. Cruz, I am asking you if this resolution can be pulled and so this discussion could occur. Because I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that not only should the documents be brought to the table, but I'm also thinking that the redevelopment attorney, which is Mr. Hoffman, should be brought to the table too. And this discussion could take place with the council, with Delisle, with Mr. Hoffman at the table. Will you, will you pull this resolution?
Council President, can I ask a question too? I have a question.
Yes, I, I just, can you let Mr. Cruz answer the question for me?
Hi, Mr. Delisle, is, 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 can we put it aside for two weeks and then bring it back at the next docket?
I. Yes.
Mr. Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you pull this document, this resolution until the next meeting, until the next council meeting? And in the meantime, if Mr. Cruz can have Mr. Segal set up time that Councilwoman Vaughn, Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Delisle. Mr. Hoffman, and Mr. Delisle, along with any other council, any other two council members that would like to sit in on this particular meeting to discuss the fair housing laws and to discuss the deed restriction laws and the, this particular resolution and the memo that's attached. Can we, can you do that, Mr. Cruz?
Yes, Madam President, we can convey that message and work with Mr. Conlin to put it on the agenda.
All right, I appreciate that. Now, Mr., I'm going to give the floor to Councilman Harrison.
In the resolution, down the bottom, it says developer slash owner did not receive any city slash state or federal finance for the construction of the project that will require any affordability restriction. It says that. Is that correct, Mr. Delisle?
That is correct.
Okay. It's right there. It says it in writing. Sure. It says it right there. You could read that. Do we not see that on there? It says it right there, clear as day.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other question that you would like to add?
No, I just like to know why, if it says it there, then why are you going to be tabling something if it says it right there? And it's right in the documents.
It has nothing to do with, this has nothing to do with an impeachment, Mr. Harrison. And so did you want to be a part of the discussion? Did you want to include you as part of the discussion?
Yes, I want to be a part of it, yes.
All right, so just let Mr. Conlin through availability, and we'll take it from there. And Mr. Rodriguez, are you saying that you would like to be a part of that discussion? All right. The three council members that will be a part of the discussion is Councilwoman Vaughn from the West Ward, Councilman Harrison from the East Ward, and Councilman Rodriguez at large. So they will all be a part of that.
Counsel President, since I wanted to be at that meeting, and we can only have three, then I would like to be filled in about the meeting.
Right, we all want to be filled in, because we're going to need that information moving forward. Yes, definitely. All righty, so Mr. Conlin, can you move forward with 21-088?
Well, Council President, Council President, I know we scheduled meetings in the past, but before, can you give them exactly what they need to bring to this meeting? Because I just, I don't want to show up and just to have a back and forth. Again, I just want Rod DeWitt to be there, who is the Law Director, our Housing and Economic Development, our Development Attorney, Mr. Hoffman, and I need those specs of those apartments. And I want to make sure that there were no improvements on them. So some sections, there are some sections of the document that was materially left out and deleted. The document was materially altered.
Okay, so we will.
And the DCA, the Council of Affordable Housing, COA, needs to be, needs to verify, and I need the Law Department to go to COA, the Council of Affordable Housing, and ask them what document, which is the valid document, and verify that this one that Mr. Brenner and Eric Jackson, the former mayor, signed on is a valid one, because it looks materially altered. It has been materially modified. So if you go onto the DCA website, you'll see the document in its entirety, the mandatory deed restriction for rehabilitated rental property, Appendix E3. And you compare it to what was submitted and signed on by Mayor Jackson and former Mayor Jackson and the developer, minus any other entity. I don't see a law, the Law Department's signature. I don't see the administrative agent decision. I don't see the council president's signature. And we know that the mayor and the developer can't unilaterally sign off on anything. And that's what's happened here. So we have some material concerns about this. I just need the Law Department to make sure that when we have that discussion, that we have all the necessary data. So we need to go to the Council of Affordable Housing to get that information and to validate that the deed restriction that Mr. Brenner signed on is a valid one, and that they material in the alter, in the modifications were made by the state.
Okay, so Mr. Conlin, would you be in touch with Councilwoman Vaughn to get all of the information that she's asking to be included in that meeting? And I will email you what I think should be included. And if Mr. Harrison and Mr. Councilman Harrison and Councilman Rodriguez and any other the council wants to submit to you a list of things that should be brought to the meeting, would they please do it no later than Friday of this week? No later than Friday of this week. Could you please have all of your documentation that you're requesting to be at that meeting given, turned over to Mr. Conlin, so he can submit it to Mr. Cruz, and Mr. Cruz can distribute it to Attorney DeWitt and Mr. Delisle, and to any other parties involved? Thank you.
Counsel President.
From 21-086 to 21-088, we're going to move on to this resolution.
Madam President, we get copies of those documents before that meeting. I don't have copies of that deed restriction document.
You can talk to Mr. Conlin about what you need, and he'll make sure that you get it. Mr. Conlin, can we move on to the Department of Law, West Burgess Acting Director?
Yes, ma'am. This will have to be roll called. This is also, this is 21-088, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a civil suit settlement in the matter of Digital First Media versus City, Trenton City Council, and Duane M. Harris, in the amount of $17,500.
Okay, now, we're going to, Mr. Councilman Harrison, this is your time to do your walk-on.
Madam President, I have questions about this, 21-088.
Okay.
I don't understand what is this.
That's going to be talked about in the, discussed in the executive session, yes.
Okay, great, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Councilman Harrison, are you prepared to do the walk-on?
Yes.
All right.
My resolution is to condemn the use of hate speech in public discourse. Whereas the people of the state of Jersey have a 122-year history of providing enhanced protection through speech within its border. Government efforts to outlaw speech for hate or bias have generally been ruled to be unconstitutional. Whereas the people of the state of Jersey seek to make known that they do not condone the use of hate, biased speech in public discourse at City Hall. Whereas a very recent public event in the city of Trenton included language that is both hateful and biased and aimed at a different race, religion, ethic, and sexual orientation. The city of Trenton wants to condone any speech that discharges any individual on the basis of race, sex, national origin, color, religion, gender identity, expression, sexual orientation, and disability. Now therefore be resolved, the City Council of the city of Trenton, that hate and biased language, particularly where there is used in public gathering or events in the city of Trenton, is unwelcome, may to cause alarm, and has no place in our public discourse. Secondly, I think we should waive, we should actually allow the public tonight the ability to talk about their feelings. People tonight want to talk about what happened and their concerns, and I think the public should have that right. And I think we should waive that and let the public be able to speak tonight on their feelings. I know there's people out there on this phone call probably tonight who would like to speak on this. So I would, I'd make the motion on the floor to consider temporary suspensions of the rules, so let the public comment tonight at tonight's meeting regarding the rally. I think there's people on this phone, so I would like to, I'll play on that.
Those individuals will have the opportunity to speak on Thursday. Mr., are you going to introduce your walk-on?
Yes.
Because he got two things going on. He started out with the walk-on. I need to know what the procedure are, because he's.
We can do it in line, so we have the introduction of a walk-on resolution by Mr. Harrison, and that would be a resolution, I believe, just temporarily going to number 21-089. Just in case there isn't 089, I'll make that correction at the Thursday meeting. Do I have a second to Mr. Harrison? Actually, it's just a walk-on for right now. So actually, the procedure would be here, and Mr. Harrison, you're not calling for a vote. You indicated that you're calling for a vote on this on Thursday, so we don't need to do an introduction or anything else, Counsel President. If you're going to accept the walk-on, then we can, you know, we can move that onto the docket for Thursday. With regard to the motion to suspend the rule, though, that does have to be voted on, and I am seeking a second for that.
Counsel President, can we speak on the walk-on resolution? Because we spoke on all the other resolutions on the docket.
Yes, ma'am, but for right now, I do have a motion on the floor that does need to be either seconded or should fail for lack of a second. So I'm going to ask the council, once again, do I have a second for Mr. Harrison's motion to suspend the rule to allow the public to speak beyond docket items to discuss the rally that occurred in front of City Hall? Hearing none, a second, the motion fails for lack of a second. My apologies, Mr. Harrison, but the motion does fail. And now, Counsel President, you may open the floor to discuss resolution temporarily numbered 21-089.
All right, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn, for the resolution.
Yes, well, I'm very happy that it failed. And I would support a such a resolution. Since 2014, we came onto this council, I believe, in free speech. Furthermore, it has been clearly a double standard here in the culture at City Hall by the mayor and his administration. I believe, not only here in the city of Trenton, but across our state and across our nation, that all speech that racial epithets, rather, it's a racial epithet against the Jewish community, any derogatory, we, the city had went through a big ordeal when our council used the term Jew-down. We went, I went through both of those events when I had an argument with the mayor, and I used certain language, and I was accused of being, I used the word pedophile, and folks said that, and then now we hearing the word faggot being used, and folks are saying that that's hate speech. But in our own City Hall, the word nigger was used, and we, that didn't make front page. That didn't get, you know, the council culture was not in full force and effect when the word nigger is used. So I will appeal to Americans and Trentonians locally and New Jerseyans that we need to apply equity and equality to all our citizens, no matter what station of life, no matter their race, no matter their religion. So if you, we are going to hold certain individuals accountable. We need to hold all of us accountable. Okay, so.
Can we, my apologies, Counselwoman, can we please remove that party from the meeting? My apologies, we can't have interruptions like that. Counsel President, at your disposal, please, if that's all right.
So I am, as a woman, as an African American, as a race being black, a person of color. So when I see a speech that epithets hateful and derogatory names being called or thrown at, referencing African Americans and people of my color, and it doesn't make the front page news, and the mayor does not come forward and profess zero tolerance, but he only does it for certain communities, then I have some concerns about that. So the mayor has to set the stage. It begins and ends with him. He defines the culture of our city. He is the leader. It starts at the top. The culture in City Hall is not friendly to women. I get complaints from women that have raised sexual harassment complaints at City Hall. The misogynist culture there, here in City Hall, it's unacceptable. Women are being sexually harassed on the job, and we have nothing from the mayor or the business administrator. Their cries and their complaints get brushed under the rug. So I am appalled that my fellow councilman wants to come up now and raise a resolution. He didn't raise a resolution when we were discussing epithets that were offensive to the Jewish community. He didn't raise a resolution when we were discussing offensive language that was hurled at the LGBT community. And he certainly didn't raise it when, here in City Hall, a certain director referred to us as niggers, okay? Didn't say a word. So I think that we would need to move forward and put our best foot forward and denounce any type of hate speech done by anybody, whether it's on the sub to City Hall or inside the offices of City Hall. So we should have zero tolerance, and no one should be using it, and we don't need a resolution to move forward in that vein. We have, this council has approved anti-bully, anti-bullying legislation. We have approved anti-sexual harassment, anti-harassment, anti-retaliation, so that when women and minorities and people of protected classes raise a complaint to Human Resources, Mr. Cruz, that that complaint gets taken seriously, and the Law Department should act immediately to address that issue. There should not be a man running around City Hall harassing, sexually harassing women, and women lose their jobs and get ostracized and get demoted. And this is going on as we speak. So I am coming for Mr. Cruz, and I am coming for the mayor, and we're going to address these issues about these women. And as far as what has happened to the council president, everybody in the city needs to be appalled as to what happened. And the mayor should have came out and stood with the council president. But he didn't. So, and so should Mr. Harrison, because Mr. Harrison censored me for my derogatory speech. So he only wants to single out certain individuals. And that's not right, Mr. Harrison. So. So I need to just, um, that's, I mean, that's all I have to say. But I just hope that going forward, the mayor, who is right now the CEO of the city, the leader of our city, uh, set out a zero tolerance and make sure that ordinances are, 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 um, are enforced around these type of issues. There is no reason that those racial epithets, calling a black woman a crackhead, referring to her in the most derogatory terms, and she is the president of council leading our city. And everybody should be appalled about that. It's inexcusable. So, and, and crackhead, by the way, is a racial epithet that usually hurled at black Americans. And I find it to be hate speech. Rather, it was used by another African American is of no consequence. The whole community need to be appalled, and it should be zero tolerance for it. And, and consequences should, 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 should be realized here. And people need to be held accountable, and the mayor needs to come out and speak against these type of instances when they happen. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, um, before you speak, Councilwoman, uh, make a statement.
Uh, well, first, I wanted to say, I've been all along against all this racist comments, homophobic comments. I've spoken out, I spoke out against this, that night. If you go back and look at the transcripts, you'll see I was the only one that spoke up and said that this is out of control. Just like the last time. So this is not about the mayor, this is about the city council. Our behavior is embarrassing. Everybody all over the state and all over the country sees this. They see it in the news all the time, over and over and over again. But see, some of my colleagues want to push it under the rug because they're okay with saying these kind of words. I'm never okay with saying any kind of racist or any kind of homophobic or any of these comments. They should never be said. And I don't understand why we just seem to kind of want to gloss over, but my colleagues have. We've all, this council has been out of control. And I think, uh, the council from the West, I mean, keeps bringing up the mayor. It's not the mayor who had a rally. It was the council president who had a rally, who had people out there making homophobic comments, and it was out of control. But then again, this council has been out of control. We should not be acting like this. It's an embarrassment to every person in this city who's paying taxes. Every day, they wake up saying to themselves, why did I vote for this council? You know why? Because they're saying to themselves, it's embarrassing, it is out of control. But at the end of the day, I want this, like I said, the resolution on Thursday, and hopefully my colleagues all be against hate speech, because they all say tonight, it seems like you are against it, so you should be supporting this. So hopefully, you all support this. You know what I mean? There was comments made about my mother, about the mayor, about everybody else. We shouldn't be doing these things. We should be only concerned about city business. That's it. Who cares? And the people don't care whether we like each other. They only care about the city of Trenton moving forward. That's it. I would never stand in the way of redevelopment in any ward, because at the end of the day, if the, if the community wants that, I will stand there and support it. Thank you very much.
Madam President? Yeah, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson asked for the floor.
Yeah, um, you know, with all due respect to Councilman Harrison, you know, for the past two, past two years, the women on this council have been subject to verbal abuse, disrespect, and name-calling, and they have been verbally accosted by other council member. And, and, and Mr. Harrison, you have witnessed the verbal abuse that I have had to tolerate from another council member, and you said nothing. I didn't see you come up with a resolution after all of that. But when I read the newspapers the other day and read what was said about Council President McBride, they stepped over the line. And I don't understand why now, why now, all of a sudden, you are pushing a resolution that we already have covered it with resolutions in, in, in the city. We have the, we have the sex discrimination, we have the bullying, we have all of that. We don't need to duplicate it. People just start to, start to have, start acting with respect. And I, for one, and I am, I'm saying it right now, I will not tolerate any more abuse towards me. I've been called an old bag by a council person. I have been called a racist by a council person. I, Mr., Mr. Michelle's wife was called white trash by the same council person. So you can't sweep us all with a paintbrush and say that we are out of control. There are only certain people on this council that have caused a lot of dissension, a lot of anger. And I don't see any point in duplicating all the efforts that we have tried to make this city enforce the laws that we try to pass. Um, I, for one, would hope that the attitudes would change and that we'd start respecting one another. We don't have to like one another, but we have to respect the seat that we're in. We're here to do a job. We're here to move the city forward. The administration has got to stop resisting everything that we try to question and move forward. So again, Mr. Harrison, where were you when I needed you? Thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, I don't want, I don't want to repeat what Councilwoman March Cardwell just said or parts of what Councilwoman Dawn said, because I have been witness for the past two and a half years of attacks, not only against women, against seniors, seniors. We have been insulted over, over and over. We have been called sinners. We, we have, we have been called idiots. We have, have been called all kinds of names there, because we did not vote with a certain, uh, member of council. So what I say, I would like to see that resolution amended. Uh, uh, it should include also, uh, uh, something regarding the, the language that would have been used over and over by the same council person, that should be included. If that is included, I will agree with it, but if not, you know, that is, is not fair that when I, I am witness to it, because I have not missed one of the meetings yet in the past two and a half years, and I have been there. And I have been part of the attacks. We have not said much. Uh, uh, March Cardwell, I, George Mochau, we have not said much, but they have been calling us sinners, sinners, idiots, just because we failed to vote for certain resolutions. You know, I believe that we should be fair. I saw that right away in the internet. I saw it, I was in Puerto Rico, but I saw. I was, I saw that in the internet right away, uh, condemning, condemning, uh, uh, our, uh, council president. But how about the reason for that rally? Have anybody talked about it? Why don't they see the other side also? Right away, this, these organizations in the internet, I said, take an orbit, right away, right away. They, oh, we have to condemn the council president. But how about condemning the person, the councilman that thinks they want, have been attacking us over and over and over and offending us and offending seniors, offending women, just for the heck of it? And afterwards, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I should not have done that. That's all, we hear over and over and over. How about censoring that council person? Thank you.
Council Vice President, uh, Council President, sorry, Council President?
No, 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 Mr. Harrison, you've had your opportunity. Um, Mr. Michelle, did you want to add to the conversation, or you want to keep it moving?
No.
Miss? We can't, we can't hear you. Councilman Michelle?
I think we've covered very clearly, have no further information on that, more on that.
Council President?
No, no, no.
Well, this is my resolution. Council President, it's my resolution, so I, I have the right to speak last, it's my resolution.
You've already been given that opportunity, Councilman Harrison.
But the resolution, because it's my resolution, I have the, uh, the, the ability to close it out, to speak on it. Because, okay, I would, what I would like to say, first of all, um, if you go check the records, any racist comments, I'm the one that stood up. Everybody else was quiet on that. So I don't understand, and Ms. Caldwell Wilson is saying that she was attacked. If, did she follow complaint? I mean, come on, it, it, at the end of the day, this council has been out of control. By all this, we've all gotten upset and everything else, but now we're making racist comments, homophobic comments. This is the point that it's got to stop. This, you're right, it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be happening, but you're having a rally about hate speech, and you have more hate speech. How does that make any sense? A rally about hate speech, and you have more hate speech? Uh, that makes no sense at all, some of that. That, that's what I'm saying, at the end of the day, you're right, we should, and I, I agree with Ms. Caldwell Wilson. We don't all have to like each other, but at the end of the day, we should be, uh, cordial towards each other. We should at least listen to each other's concerns, right? There's redevelopment at East Trent Collaborative, I think it's a wonderful ideal for the North Ward. I would never stand against it. And that's the same thing I try to tell my other colleagues. But we should not always try to go after each other and turn it into this, whatever this is, it's embarrassing. It is. Anytime we're ending up in the paper, on the front cover, and it's regarding this stuff, it's an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment to all the people in the city that are paying taxes. They should be embarrassed. They should outright be embarrassed and fuming because they're saying, what in the world is going on here? That's what I'm trying to say to you, Councilman, I think it's unacceptable. This kind of behavior is unacceptable, and it needs to stop. It should not happen anymore. We don't, like you said, we don't have to like each other, but at the end of the day, we're working for the people. That's all that matters. I've, I do work with things with Mr. Michelle regarding, uh, stuff in the community, regarding cleaning ups in the alleyways. He gives me information, I give him information, I appreciate his help. Like you said, I appreciate when Marge is talking about the, the East Trent Collaborative, I think it's a wonderful ideal. You know what I mean? I think all of us have our abilities, but at the end of the day, we need to stop just trying to go after each other all the time. But when you get to the point that you're making racist, anti-Semitic, homophobic comments, that's, that's a point that people should be saying to themselves, what is going on here? It's out of control. That's my point. I, 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 it's totally out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. I just wanted to just add a couple of words to this conversation. And the first thing I want to say is that Divine Allah, before he made his statement, stated that he was not affiliated with any political institution, or he wasn't beholden to any man. And I, for one, said to Mr. Divine, after he spoke, that he did not speak on the views of Kathy McBride. And so when everyone in the public wants to say that Kathy should be responsible for, for what a, uh, individual in a community says, that I should be held to a standard that no one else is held to, that I should be reprimanded because Divine Allah spoke his, that's his constitutional right and freedom of speech? Do I agree with him? No. Did those words come out of my mouth? No. But I didn't hear any of these same people, Mr. Harrison, coming saying that Mr. Blakely should not have called me a prostitute and a crackhead. But yet still, you, you, and the mayor never said anything. He never mumbled a word. And now all of you are running to the front gates, hollering, Kathy, Kathy, I didn't say those words. They came from Divine Allah, and he's a man. If you have a problem with what he said like I do, I took it to him. Now you should take your complaint to him, not to Kathy McBride, because Kathy McBride did not say that. And I said to Divine Allah, why would you make such comments? After you knew my son of nineteen years old put this rally together? Why would you make that type of impression on my son? Why would you even do that, Divine? Why would you come up here and make a statement like that against anyone, knowing that my nineteen-year-old son hosted this rally? So don't you dare, any of you, run up in my face and tell me that I have to start being responsible for a man and his actions? Because freedom of speech does not allow me to tackle a person on the ground and say, oh, you shouldn't have said that. He's an adult, he knew he shouldn't have said it. And I knew he shouldn't have said it, and you know he shouldn't have said it. So don't bring it to me, take it to Divine Allah. That's whose mouth it came out of, not Kathy McBride. And if we want to solicit all of the communities that the young man spoke of to raise money for his campaign, then so be it. But do not attack Kathy McBride for words that did not come out of her mouth. Because the words that came out of my mouth, I took ownership of. I took responsibility for those words. So if you want to come after someone, Mr. Harrison and Mr. Gussiora and all the above with your glee club, go face Divine Allah like I faced him on Friday, like I stated to the newspapers on Friday. He does not speak for me. I will never condone such, uh, outburst of calling individuals, uh, racist, uh, names. I would never condone that type of nonsense. I said that after he made the statement. So don't come for me, go address Mr. Allah, go address him face to face. And that's all I have to say about that. We can move on, so we can wrap this.
Resolutions, we're going to open it up to, uh, the public for public portion. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask two things.
Yeah, uh, um, the executive thing is for Thursday?
Yes, ma'am, the, the executive session will be Thursday. Uh, we'll hear the executive session on Thursday, and then we'll go right to those resolutions.
All right, and, um, the public has to keep it to the docket.
Yes, ma'am, and, and I'm going to ask the public to please, uh, just, uh, maintain decorum. Please speak on the docket items only, uh, that does not include resolution, the walk-on resolution oh eighty-nine. You, if you wish to comment on that, I'll have a print copy up on ECO three sixty sometime tomorrow, and, uh, you can comment on that on Thursday, and I'm going to ask that you maintain that. That being said, this is docket items only, it's ten minutes apiece, uh, please speak freely but politely. And, uh, do I have anybody who would like to be heard on the docket items only? Council President, I have Ms. Sherry Garrett.
Yes, the right.
Ms. Garrett, you're going to have to unmute yourself. Oh, she has exited the meeting, she will be right back, we'll, we'll wait. Oh, there you go. Um, Ms. Garrett, you have been recognized by the council.
Uh, thank you, Council President McBride and, um, Ms. Collins. I would like to address twenty-one zero seven seven in regards to the Correction Action Plan for the city. Um, I have, uh, uh, the, uh, Correction Action Plan from the state, from the Department of Community Affairs, and it just says that, um, New Jersey local finance notice ninety-two fifteen requires the Correction Action Plan be prepared in accordance with OMB requirements and submitted to Division of Local Government Services sixty days from the date the audit is received by the governing body. The plan as developed should cover all findings and recommendations as well as provide status of all prior year's findings and recommendations. Local finance notice ninety-two fifty applies to all municipalities, counties, authorities, and fire districts in New Jersey. So just wanted to, to, to tell you that they should have presented this to council, um, sixty days ago. Um, in regards to twenty-one eight oh, the potholes, uh, what the city of Trenton has been doing, uh, they've been filling the potholes, you know, after the, the winter season. And what's happening is every winter, if there's a, a freeze or ice on the ground, that the, um, the, uh, blacktop is filled into those. is filled into those holes, freeze up, they shrink, and they pop out of the holes. So, you know, we're spending a lot of money filling these holes every year. But why aren't these roads being blacktop? You know, laid down, take the roads being retired, or however you say it. So because it seems like every year, and people have their tires and their rims damaged from these potholes. 21085, yes, Councilwoman, Council President McBride, 2185, it was February 4, 2021, and it was a resolution 21035. And you are correct, it was tabled. And it addressed a host of outside entities that wanted to, different entities that had businesses or worked for the state of New Jersey in the city of Trenton, but they didn't live in the city of Trenton. That was why it was pulled. And yes, Director Dela, I was supposed to get back to you, and there was supposed to be a committee, a committee forum to replace the entities that the mayor selected. That's how that went. That is, and then for 21086, there was no dollar amount on that. Table by, okay, so there was no dollar amount of what the resale and refinancing, if they changed the I think that needs to be accompanied to that. And just to say, you know, I'm not speaking directly on it, but, you know, we as adults have to realize, sticks to stones, you know, like they say, breaks to bones, but we have to realize as adults, names cannot hurt you. So it's a mental thing. And to Councilman Harrison, you know, you do a lot of scolding on that.
Ma'am, could you please keep it to the docket items? Your comments would be more.
I'm done. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Next, Council President, we have Ms. Cordelia Stan.
Go right ahead.
Go right ahead. Good evening, Council. I just have a few things regarding the docket. Under correspondence, number two I. Is there, can you give me any further explanation on that particular civil action?
Council President, two.
That would have, I see it, the action for the opus, that there is an attorney addressing all of the opus. So there will be someone, there should be someone to address a particular lawsuit, because it's not for us to address. But there will be some type of legal representation for that particular action.
So it has to do with opus requests?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to talk about, well, actually, I had two other things, but I see that they were pulled. But on 2180, the asphalt contract. Does Council have any idea what streets they're talking about?
2180 for the asphalt.
Council went over a list with Mr. Cruz of the streets that they would like repaired in addition to the ones contemplated by Mr. Onatiri for the basic repairs to fill in the, for the purchase for the asphalt.
Is that a public document?
The list, the list that they created? Well, the list that Mr. Onatiri has is public. And as soon as Mr. Cruz put together the list that was given to him this evening, it would definitely be shared with the public. It will be able to, you can always over that.
On the resolution 2718, which was the acquisition of a Ford van for the water department, I just need to know, was that going to be a replacement or an addition to the fleet?
It's an addition.
And lastly, I just want to make a comment regarding Councilman Harrison's walk-on.
That would be appropriate for Thursday, ma'am. I apologize to interrupt you, but there was a ruling on the floor to suspend the rule. The motion did fail, or we were going to stick to the docket. But you are more than welcome to come to Thursday's meeting. I can send you a meeting link if you'd like.
Thank you very much. That's all I have. Good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else be like to be addressed to Trenton City Council this evening for docket items only? Anyone on the phone?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Connie Johnson. I live on Berkeley Avenue. Can you clearly hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay. I came in a little late, so I'm not sure of all the docket. But what I would like to know is, and I'm new, I'm very new to this process. So I'd like to know, how do I get an email? I just heard you say that you were going to send a link to someone. So how do I get what these dockets or ordinances are prior to the meeting?
Counsel President, with your indulgence, I'd like to answer her question.
Sir, I didn't finish my statement. Can I?
She could give you her name and her number, and you can get back with her later and give her all the information that's needed.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to finish my question. So can I do that, or?
Please, please, you can.
Thank you. What I was saying was that I would like, not just to go online and, I don't know, go into whatever the website is, I would actually like to receive an email, which I was told that I can ask for this. So I would like to receive an email outlining whatever these meetings, whatever's relevant in these meetings, either on a Tuesday or Thursday, so that I can at least, you know, do some kind of research so that I know what you guys are actually really talking about. Because I only get what's going on as I'm on the phone for all of these hours. And then I'm just basically taking notes. So I can't really properly, you know, ask a question because I don't really know what's happening. And that said, you're Mr. Conlin?
Yes, ma'am, I'm the city clerk. If you contact my office, I would be happy. If you contact my office tomorrow, I'd be happy to add you to the agenda distribution list. Anybody can be added to that by contacting my office. And you can find the resolutions and documents on Ecode 360. But I'd be happy to add you to the resolution distribution list. You can call 989-3187 tomorrow and provide us your email, and I'd be happy to do that. Or you can email clerk@trentonnj.org. Either or. Thank you. Did you have any other comment, ma'am?
I think she muted herself.
If you are muted, you can star six and unmute yourself, ma'am. Does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council for docket items only? Second call, anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council for docket items only for tonight's meeting? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close public portion? Have motion by Council President McBride to close public portion. Do I have seconds?
Second.
I have a second on Mr. Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
I have all in favor, any opposed? So ordered, public portion is closed. Counsel President, the next docket, the next agenda item is civic comment.
Counsel President?
Yes, Councilwoman Colwell Wilson.
Yes, I actually would like to speak to Mr. Cruz.
Right ahead.
Mr. Cruz, are you available?
Yes, I am on.
Okay, we have an issue in Mill Hill, and we had this, if you recall, when I came over for a meeting with you, I said there was no way to get in or out of Mill Hill because these workers are working on the street, and there's only one way in and one way out of Mill Hill. And it was impossible to get into our community. Today, we had the same problem. They're blocking off all the streets. You can't get in, you can't get out. And the workers are giving a hard time. And one of the workers said to a neighbor who said, how am I supposed to get out of here or get in? He said, well, don't you want nice new shiny pipes? So I would suggest that Mr. Santoro talk to these workers and have them understand that there's only one entrance and one exit, and they have to set up the streets in a way that we can at least get in and out. Market Street was blocked off today, too. So, I mean, they were just blocking off the whole community.
I will take care of that matter, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Could you let me know what they have to say about that? Because when they're digging up the streets, I don't know why they don't do one side at a time and why they have to close off the entrances, because it's just really, really disturbing all our packages. We can't receive mail. We can't receive packages, can't receive deliveries, nothing.
Right.
So I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilman Harrison?
I just want to reiterate what I was saying earlier. It's a resolution condemning the use of hate speech in public discourse. If I had, like I said, if I had had a rally and somebody had said something that was like that, I should have right then and there said that I was totally against that. So I think overall, hopefully, we can get support on Thursday for this. Because like I said, at the end of the day, this behavior needs to stop. It's unacceptable. Thank you.
Councilman Yushal?
Yes. For an answer I'd like to have.
We can't hear you.
From the BA. Is he on right now?
Can't hear you.
Can't hear him. You can't hear.
He's asking if the BA is on. Yes, sir, Mr. Michelle, the BA is on.
Right.
You're fading in and out, sir. If you can move closer to the microphone, that might help.
Do we have?
Do we have a what, sir? I'm sorry, you faded out. A chief of?
Staff.
Staff for the city hall. That would be Mr. Manali, I believe.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, sir. You're fading out again. There appears to be a bad connection. I believe the question is, do we have a chief of staff right now in city hall?
That's correct. Worked for the city of Trenton.
Mr. Cruz, the question is to you, sir. Counsel President, did you want to entertain that?
Yes. Mr. Cruz?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Is he on the air right now?
He is not, sir. He did not make the meeting.
My understanding is he's no longer employed by the city of Trenton. I had several people come in my office today and say he's no longer employed for the city of Trenton. I'm sure you would know, Mr. Cruz, if he's there or not. And you're saying he's not. Is that correct?
Councilman, your question was, is there a chief of staff employed for the city of Trenton? And the answer is yes. It's not going to change.
And who is it? And who's the chief of staff right now?
The one that has always been, Joshi Manali.
Okay, that's all I want to know. That's all I want to know. So these other directors that came into my office today, I guess they're not telling the truth. Thank you very much for that information.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, my comment is in reference to the police director, if he's online. I would like to get my copy of that assessment that was done concerning the radio room. Also, I'd like to know whether that contract with the present company is due. I was told about two months ago that the assessor was writing the report. But I was told by somebody else that the report had already been written. And two months ago, a person had a copy of the report. So I would like to get my hard copy of the report and also for it to be sent to every council member. So I'd like to know what's going on with the radio room at this time.
Good evening, Madam President. May I speak?
Ms. Director Coley, you would have to talk to him, I believe, in writing. I think that's the way it goes. You would have to submit something to him in writing and submit the reports that he's asking for in writing.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to say that I've already submitted those reports to the business administrator so that everything would be done properly. I submitted the report to the business administrator, and I believe that he will disseminate same to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, I just want to say that over the past two years, yep, I guess we all agree, we all agree that the behaviors and the name-calling and the racial epithets are just unacceptable. But I stand by my position that the culture of the city and is totally, I've never seen this type of behavior, even with prior councils, right? With leaking information and leaking confidential information in meetings. I mean, I've never experienced this in the city of Trenton. And certainly never seen it on prior councils and with other mayors. So I hold ultimately Mayor Gussior accountable. And not one person has really, even the media, has not held the mayor accountable. And he's the mayor of the city. So he sets the culture. So that's who we should hold accountable, and that's who we should wait to hear from. And he's been silent. So that's, if Mr. Harrison has questions and have concerns, he should take it to the mayor. I think, again, I believe the mayor should have stood with Kathy McBride as the president of council. That would have been the professional thing to do. But the mayor has been very personal with his attacks on the council. And I just find that unacceptable. And particularly, in the misogynistic culture has got to stop. You know, we talk about racial issues, and we talk about, you know, issues surrounding the LGBT community, but we don't talk about women issues. And in this decade, in this country, we talk about the Me Too, we're in the midst of the Me Too movement and the Time's Up movement. And women have been under attack for centuries, you know, the subjugation of women. So we're fighting for equal pay. We're fighting for equal rights and equity in the workplace. So we want the mayor to, you know, it's, you know, I'm African-American, and it's great if I advocate for African-Americans and people of my race. But as the mayor of the city, and the mayor of a diverse city, he should be advocating for all protected classes, right? And I don't see that with Mayor Gussior. And ultimately, I hold him accountable. And I think we all should. We elected him. He's our leader. I respect that he's our leader. I respect that he's our leader. We have our differences and the mayor knows that I'm upfront and direct with him about my, about criticism, criticism of his policies. However, I, I, I need him to lead the city and, 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 and set the stage and, and address some of these horrific behaviors that we see in, in the workplace at City Hall and, and in our government, a bone star of representation. And he's a part of that, right? So he doesn't get a pass. And it's a shame that the fourth estate, the media that cover Trenton, gives him a pass as well. And that's unacceptable. Prior administrations, we heard, I mean, they, they had Tony Mack on the front page every day. They had Eric Jackson on the front page every day, right? Very critical of minorities and women in leadership, right? So, and very critical of, of black activists, right? Black Lives Matter, very critical. Label them domestic terrorists. I believe in free speech, certainly not hate speech of any kind. And no one has ever heard Robin Vaughn say, say anything hateful about anybody or called anybody any names. So, so I, I, and, and, and I just think that, but I do have a right to defend myself. So let's be clear here. So, and that's a whole nother issue. But I don't go after people for their political views. I, 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 I debate and I support things based on merit and based on information. So, so, and just like Council Vice President Colwell Wilson stated, right? And, and also Councilman Santiago, Santiago Rodriguez, people have been chastised because of their political positions. They call out names because they don't agree with the administration resolutions and et cetera, or ordinances, whatever he has put forward, his policies, and then the personal attacks ensue. And that's just unacceptable by any executive. It's unprofessional and it's not right. But I don't see Mr. Harrison or anybody else, Mr. Blakely, condemn the mayor or, or a lot of folks in, in the community. We got to hold our mayor and our leaders accountable. And sometimes, you know, when you talk about hate speech and activism and complaining or criticism, sometimes people hear the message, don't want to hear the message if it comes from certain groups, right? So if, if, if a, if a black person complains about racism, oh, it's not important, it doesn't make fun, praise news, right? Like, hey, Kathy McBride is attacked, right? She's a human being. No one's standing with her. No one, nobody, Kathy is, is the victim here, okay? Let's be clear, Kathy McBride is the victim. So, so we, we have to recognize that. So no matter who, you know, let's, let's not worry about who the messenger is. Let's, let's criticize the message, okay? So, and let's continue on the route to equity and equality in this country for all. And I know that our Governor Murphy, and I want City Hall to do the same. The Governor Murphy, I believe, is due to sign a bill to make sure that every public school has a diversity and inclusion officer in their school. And that's one thing the mayor, Mayor Reed Gussior has not done. I have been asking along with our council members for an Office of Equal Opportunity Employment, Affirmative Action, and Office of Diversity and Inclusion, and he has turned his nose about it. And, and, and now our Governor Murphy has, has put a law into place that every public school district needs to have a diversity and inclusion officer. And here we are, our mayor refuses to do that. But he's done put every other type of office in there, but he will not put an Office of EEO, Contract Compliance, Affirmative Action, and, and Office of Diversity and Inclusion. So, and I would just want to say outside of that, but I will continue to advocate for that office. It's very important. And I will also work on getting our city cleaned up. We have a lot of corruption going on in the City of Trenton. You know, we've been doing business in violation of many laws, violation of contract laws. We're not getting a sufficient legal representation here on council. Just because we have done things in the past and incorrectly, we need to move to fix it. And we have some issues, contracts, the, going around contract laws, we got issues right here, redevelopment, we seen here on the docket tonight. So people got to know that when you come to Trenton and you do business, that Trenton is, is not corrupt. Trenton has clean processes. We, 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 we follow the law here in Trenton. No investor, I assure you. The reason why many times investors don't come to the city, and I know folks want to say, oh, it's the council and all this, that's nonsense, nonsense. Folks haven't come to this history, city historically to do business, to invest in a meaningful and impactful way because of the corruption, okay? No investor wants to come here and has to deal with fraudulent contracts, modified contracts.
One minute.
Documents changed, you know? So, because that's a risk, right? Who does business that way? Nobody. Nobody but a corrupt, and, 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 and borderline, when you talk about corruption, you borderline criminality. So a lot of this stuff, we may have to take to the Attorney General's office, get help. So, and I will not hesitate to do that on any occasion. Don't put, don't put any illegal contracts in front of my face, on my table, and expect me to prove it, because I will take it to the right authorities and I will raise it. And, but I, I would, I would say to anybody, the directors, anybody who come to do business with this city and want the council's approval, I think that you guys should move forward, should make sure you do your homework, you do your due diligence, and you make sure they're giving you good information. And, and, and that's all I want to say about that. And I, and I yield my time and thank you very much, Council President and Vice President and, and all my members and colleagues on council. And I just hope that we move forward in a, in a better vein. We got two, a little under two years left, and we got a lot of work to do and, and, and we can accomplish it. And we can accomplish it if we all continue to work together. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I have just a couple of things that I wanted to mention to the administration this evening. I wanted to mention the inspection department. I had reported several properties, several contractors coming in, working from eight o'clock in the morning until three o'clock AM, asking for the administration to send an inspector out. The homeowners, which are taxpayers, are, are just complaining. You know that we have, over the weekend, we've had a large number of seniors complaining about them not receiving the vaccines, the immunizations, and when they went, when some of them went to get their shot, that there were people in line from other municipalities and a lot of the seniors from Trenton did not get the shot and they were seniors with underlying conditions. And then I would like to also mention to the, to the administration about the cars. We have several cars and I had sent an email up to the administration that are being driven by people that are not directors, and this has been going on for quite some time. You have recreation people driving vehicles overnight, using them as their personal vehicle. You have a person that should, is supposed to be a stock clerk with the vehicle with no city logo on it, driving the vehicles at wheel wherever they want. They've had several accidents and cost, have cost this city thousands of dollars and yet they're still, they're still behind the wheel. And so I'm just bringing this back to Mr. Cruz for the hundredth time, something needs to be done about those vehicles and how, if you're not a director, those vehicles should be parked in the city's lot and you drive your vehicle to work and leave your vehicle in the parking lot while you're on city's time. But when you leave to go home on your own time, those vehicles should be parked and no vehicle should be operating through this city without the city's logo. And last but not least, I, I am going to, on the comment that was made against me. I remember in September of 2019, when my colleague went to the newspapers and stated that silence was consent, that whomever stayed silent about a comment that I made that was not made out of malice, but I owned it, I took responsibility for it. My colleague, Jerel Blakely, stated that silence was consenting. Well, I, I like to repeat that because I'm looking at a newspaper from 2019 where you had the Assemblywoman from the 1515th District and the Assemblymen call on me to apologize, which I did. But Mr. Blakely, Councilman Blakely could come to the public and call me a prostitute as last, as recently as two months ago. Councilman Blakely said that I was a prostitute for Happy Carmichael. But I have not heard any of the black leaders. Where's the ministers at? Where is our black representatives at when I am called a crackhead? Where is NJEA at? When the councilman calls me out of my name and then he lies about it and he only confesses when he's exposed. And after he confessed because he's exposed, he said, oh, wait a minute, it happened almost a year ago, 10 months ago. But he didn't tell you about, on January the 6th, he posted a sign and said that I was an illiterate embarrassment prostitute for Happy Carmichael. But where is the leaders now? Those same leaders that demanded that I come to the public and apologize? Where was Mr. Harrison at then? Where was Mr. Harrison at then and where is he at now? The mayor came, was the one that actually gave out the executive session. But where was the mayor when Mr. Blakely, Councilman Blakely called me out of my name? Where were you? So let me tell you this. Don't come to me with your double standards because I won't accept them and I'm not going to bow down to you with your double standard. And you or no one else can say what you want to say about me as a woman or any other woman and think it's okay because it's not. And the so-called leaders in this city that would stand idly by and allow him to do it and accept it and say, oh, brother, you apologized? Well, good job. Now let's move on. What about my children? What about my small children? I had to let them read the paper. And then you run and talk about Divine. Divine is not Kathy McBride. Divine had to speak for himself. What he did was unacceptable. Take that to Divine. Don't bring it to Kathy McBride because I didn't say it. And what I said, I took ownership of it and I owned it and I apologized for it. And I will continue to let the Jewish community know that what I said was inexcusable. But I dare, I dare you rush into my face with your double standards. How dare you? I am a woman of color and I am someone's mother. You don't get to say anything that you want to about bride. Stand up and own up, so does everyone else. And I thank my colleagues. There's a woman called Will Wilson from Jerel Blakely. Some, who, some viciousness. I didn't get that on. He was just, was, was her word. No, he, he had called her a fool. Should he have called her an idiot? No, he shouldn't. So again, I will say to each and every one of you out in this at-large community, women all over America have been disrespected. And it's high time you start respecting us because we're not going to settle for anything less than that. And we hold our responsibility for the words that we use and we accept those consequences. But this is a two-sided coin. And I appreciate each and every one of you for coming to this meeting tonight. I look forward to doing the work of the city and I look forward to moving this city forward for the year and some odd months I have left on this council. And I thank you all again for coming this evening and have a blessed evening. And I will ask Mr. Colin if we can have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson to adjourn. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilmember Rodriguez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need one more.
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor, any opposed? So ordered. We are adjourned at 8:00 PM. Everybody have a blessed evening. March is National Women's History Month, so look up a famous woman and, and, and we're going to be doing some posters in the clerk's office, okay? Everybody have a great night. Please get home safe if you're not home already.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who have remained, you can find the docket, the items and the agenda at ecod360.com. Trenton has a domain there. All of our legislative documents are stored there. And if you have any questions, you may feel free to call the clerk's office. I'd be happy to walk you through it. Once again, anyone who wishes to be added to the agenda distribution list, please email We'd be happy to add you right before the meeting, usually before. So that's about that. And if you want to do it for yourself, you can go to ecod360.com. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact the clerk's office. Everybody have a great evening and get home safe. Bye-bye.